Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
This is a special meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Middletown. Pursued to the Open Public Meetings Act and laws of 1975, the public has been notified that the Planning Board will meet on August 13th, 2018, at 6:30 PM in the Town Hall. The Middletown Planning Board has notified the Independent, the Star-Ledger, and the Two River Times on August 9th, 2018. Notice of this meeting was filed with the Township Clerk and posted in the Town Hall on August 9th, 2018. All notification for this meeting was given pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act at least 48 hours prior to this meeting. I would like to have our Secretary meet the agenda for tonight.
So, this evening's agenda includes a resolution for Roger Mark Hurd Holmes, 2018-400.
Yeah, if, on the August 1st agenda meeting, this goes back a month or so, this case is in litigation, Judge Lynch is waiting for this to wrap up the case. This matter has been litigated, that litigation is pending, it held off for a while, this was on to August 1, we didn't have the meeting, and then I realized at the last minute, thinking about it, we should adopt this tonight, we can, that way we can notify the judge that the resolution is adopted, and we can speed up the process of ending that litigation. So, the board doesn't mind if we can act on that when the time comes, and then we...
I concur with that.
The only thing that changes, obviously, it's no longer said, going to say August 1, we're going to say August 13.
So, then we'll have, under Administrative Matters, Payment of Vouchers, followed by Consistency Review of Ordinance 2018-3232, adopting Circus Liquors Redevelopment Plan. There'll be a presentation of the Circus Liquors Redevelopment Plan by Fran Reiner of DMR Architects.
Okay, we really don't have any approvals for minutes, since we did not have any in early August. Let's approve, let's do the approval of the resolution. Alright, so there are only, we just got to check, are any four members eligible to make a motion, second, and vote on this? That's okay, two, four. August 1.
Okay, Mr. Colangelo?
Here.
Mr. Kruege?
Here.
Mr. Zablicky?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Davis is not here. Mr. Raffigan?
Here.
Mr. Wilton?
Not here.
And Mr. Pugh?
Here.
So, just, just one hand, you report people eligible to vote?
Right, so those that are here who are eligible are Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
But first, we have, we're just calling out that four people who are eligible?
So, Mr. Colangelo, Mr. Kruege, Mr. Davis, and Mr. Raffigan.
Okay, so one of those, and I need a motion.
Yes.
Second.
Who are you first? I think they assume that was yours.
Okay, I got to make my motion.
Second.
And then, hold on, go.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Kruege?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And Mr. Raffigan.
Thank you. Okay, alright, since this is an open meeting to the public, is there anything that the public would like to bring up for non-agenda items for tonight? Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening, I am Mr. Prosser, representing the township of Middletown. Question, the agenda states that this session for non-agenda items only will and will be taking public comment regarding the consistency review of the Circus redevelopment plan.
I will be going through, I do not believe so, but I will be giving a little tutorial on why what we're doing tonight, and that will be, that will be coming henceforth.
Okay, we are, I do have here with me the three members in line in Middletown on a commanding, Phyllis Ronding, and Ollie D'Chenzo, as well as Marc Zaleski, planner, who's been retained to do a consistency review. So, to bring this to non-agenda item, we did submit comments this afternoon. It's very short-term, we had 48 hours notice of this meeting, but we've got comments in. Questions the board have given or received?
Board always got it, the board does not.
The board does have it. We do have copies, I would like to furnish those to the members.
This is going to go on, so let me, let me cut it a bit. I'm going to read from Mr. Cox's handbook on, sorry, page 152 of the most recent edition of 2018. Let me just read from that. Question is sometimes raised as to whether the Planning Board is obliged to hold an amount to be a public hearing considering an ordinance referred to regarding lives. We don't mean the statute does not require such a hearing, the ordinance requires that the matter needs to be public comment. All deliberations by the board, of course, must be in public and comply with the Urban Public Meeting Act, but it is within discretion of the board whether to hear from members of the public about the matter. It also goes on to cite a case from Alvin Realty versus Benelvin from 1985, a Supreme Court case talking about, you have an ad hoc review by the Planning Board to see if this is substantial compliance with the ordinance. I was involved in that case from Benelvin, I'm the winning end, so I think I know what we wanted on this issue. Here's my advice, once, we're not, the board is not required, once you go beyond the point where you're not required to, and now we're in a discretionary category, there's no rules to govern, there's no rules to say, well, we can't, they can't do it. And I think, at that point, we've been warned in a situation where it's never going to be enough, it's never enough for us to examination, it's not this, and it's not that. So, my advice is rely upon what the law says you must do, we do that. And, the rest of it is too discretionary, there's, there's too many things that somebody might argue we didn't do it right, even though we didn't have to do it at all. And I don't want to wind up in that type of argument about, you know, kind of keep the law, it goes across, it wasn't enough for us to examination, or their planner said this, our planner said that, and there's, there's no reason to build a record. The record for this matter is before the governing body, on next Monday, Monday, the 20th, at 8:00. That's when the public hearing on this matter occurs. At that point, the governing body takes testimony, hears from the public, and conducts that meeting as it seems appropriate, which would require public participation. It's not required for tonight. Yes, the board could do that, but it's my recommendation that you don't. Because there's no, there's no limit on where it is, there's no limit on the debate, there's no limit on what's in, what's out, what's relevant, what's not relevant, and this is not required. And, my rec, my recommendation is that we don't do it, Mr. Ross, you want, I mean, you can ask.
First of all, just again to reiterate the situation, residents who care a lot about this project, went and retained a planner, to, to the specific issue of whether this plan is consistent with the master plan. She has prepared comments, she is here to offer testimony, okay? That's the, that's the...
I will make, I will make the decision on that.
You make the decision.
I will read my tutorial, and I will make the decision on that.
And then, the second point I'd like to say is that, sometimes in life, there's what you can do and what you should do. You don't have to run for Planning Board, your town needs you, so you sit there, and you, and you do good things for the town. What we're requesting is that this is for residents regarding this specific issue, because next Monday if you get there, you know, they'll make the comments in council, but it's a different issue with that.
Sir, I've been a vice chairman for 24 years on the Planning Board. I'm 75 years old, I think I know what I'm going to be doing. Thank you.
Okay, so we're...
Thank you.
I mean, my recommendation that that's the equivalent of putting testimony before the board, it shouldn't be considered, the board shouldn't, doesn't have to have that, doesn't need that, and that just, you submit that, and does that mean that the developers pop up and say, whoa, whoa, wait a minute, that's it? No, they haven't had a chance to read it, they don't know what's going on, this is not fair. You're saying, the board makes a determination not to allow public comment, what you're saying is, but here, take his document instead, remove a public comment, here's a report. I, I give that to the board, but it's my recommendation that there be no public comment that are written or at this meeting. The place for it is at the governing body, indeed, even on the Facebook page, or the ad, whatever it says, within stop 1035, the Planning Board does not have to allow public comment at this meeting. So, if, to say that people's flight was going to be, no, that's what you, we talked on the phone numerous times, so, I don't think this should come as a surprise, the Planning Board does not have to receive public comment at this meeting.
Yes, and you're very clear about that, I understand it, but it's still discretionary. And so, the question is...
It is, it is discretionary.
Should you?
It's discretionary.
And once again, we...
It's discretionary, sir.
So, I still haven't heard an answer as to whether, A, would be able to participate on that, B, whether we'd be able to ask questions on the presentation, and/or of the planner, who presumably is prepared to report on consistency, we did request a copy of that, but have not been furnished with such a document.
You haven't been furnished with it because of the clarity, the report from our planner is deliberate and consultative, draft, and full such time as it's discussed in public by the board. So, that hasn't happened. It will probably happen tonight, and then that document will be subject to be released, subject to...
So, the document that's, is required by the board to make statutory determination, you're saying is not available to the public until after the determination's been made? That seems frankly backwards.
Thank you.
Doesn't it, like...
Thank you, thank you for your comments, I'm not arguing any further.
I'm not arguing either, like, a copy of the document, man, have a copy of that document.
Well, that document becomes a public document, once it's relied upon, but I assume that would be relatively soon, I haven't gotten to get that yet, but at some point, once it's discussed on the board, it's a public document. We had it really clear, about there?
Yeah.
I presume that that's going to happen fairly soon, but we're not there.
Well, I have to take the live on the document in preparation for this meeting, my son, Mr. Ross, please. Part of the packet, right?
That's enough. You did note it, you've taken your into consideration what you said, okay?
So, you requested for it to be recognized during the presentation.
I would like to stand down, sir, thank you.
Clearly, Mr. Prosser's here, he identifies clients, they're here. It's a public meeting, you have, everybody's right to listen.
To not participate.
Well, that, that, unless you can show me a case where, say, they have to do it, then I think the matter is, my advice, the board has been fairly clear, and...
So, is it going to be put to a vote, the board? You've given your advice, but it's only a decision issue.
Thank you, and if we switch seats, then you can start giving that advice, okay?
I'm not giving any advice.
I think we all, I think we're...
I don't think you're so arrogant about it.
I'm not arrogant.
Yes, you are.
I am not arrogant, excuse me?
You are arrogant.
I'm not arrogant, then.
For the reasons of this town.
I have, I will be reading a tutorial on what actually is going on at this meeting. And when I'm done with that, then we're going to proceed.
And when the decision as to whether or not the public can participate, in my opinion is that the prerogative of the chair would need advice and consent basically of the public. And if anybody on the board wants to disagree with whatever the chair finds, then say it, it will be debated once the board, but the prerogative for other meetings is in the chair.
For the record, I would like to say that I would like to see open comment on this issue.
Yeah, you know, you jumped ahead, this item on the agenda, this thing is not on the agenda, and last thing I looked, this is on the agenda.
My correspondence is not on the agenda.
I, I think you're splitting hairs. But, of course, the issue's regular business, regular business, fine.
No reserve in the agenda, thank you.
Very good.
Okay, payment of vouchers for this month. For James Gorman, total 4,537,10. For TNN Associates, 18,138,38. For the Planning Board, 1,0561,75. Total 24,237 dollars and 23 cents, may I have a approval? Have a second. One favor. Two things, which is not listed on the itinerary this evening, we have Kevin Colangelo and Anthony Fiore, are back on the Planning Board. Of course, Anthony's been on here before, but Kevin is new, and I see we have just approved, and thank you for coming onto the Planning Board.
I think Kevin actually began, new mayor...
The new mayor, yes, indeed.
The new mayor designated, just like your old mayor did.
Also, I would like to say something like, Breta Swazek, who retired, who were, retired from the board last month, we wanted to thank her for her service, and she was a tremendous member of the fourth planning board for past almost eight years. We wish Breta well, and I know she will be doing a lot of service, continuing service in the North Middletown, Facher area. We thank Breta again. This meeting is tough, I realize that, we've got a lot of things going on. I'm just going to read a short tutorial, that is a breakdown of what we're actually, I'm not going to put all legalese behind it, but I'm going to just show you where we are at this point. There are a number of steps required by state statute to declare an area in need of development. One of the steps, the first step, is the governing body of a municipality passes a resolution directing the Planning Board to undertake a preliminary investigation, determine if the area in question is in need of redevelopment, and it's identified, we identify the limits of the property at that time. This was started on September 18th, 2017. The Planning Board, or consultants, which we have now, conducts an investigation and holds a public hearing on the proposed redevelopment area. The investigation is a land use study to determine if the area is in need of redevelopment in accordance with the statutory criteria. Public notice is required. This initially was presented on 12/6, December 6, 2017. Based on the Planning Board recommendation, the governing body may designate by resolution all or portion of the area as an area in need of redevelopment. Important, no public hearing is required for this portion of the process. Fourth step, the governing body prepares a redevelopment plan for the area, or directs the Planning Board to prepare the plan. This can be done in-house or by a consultant, we have used a consultant. The governing body adopts by ordinance the redevelopment plan, this was adopted July It's, the ordinance is introduced, referred to the Planning Board for a consistency review. The Planning Board reviews it to determine whether the provisions of the redevelopment plan are consistent with the municipal master plan, or designed, or designed to effectuate the purpose of the master plan. The Planning Board prepares a report noting their findings to the governing body. Planning Board's role is not to review the merits of the plan, it is only to, to just go and check the consistency with the master plan. The governing body is, is at the second reading, the second reading is going to be on Monday, August 20th, at 8:00 PM, with the Township Committee. At this time, and that step of public hearing is filed, and all questions are given to the Township Committee. The governing body oversees the implementation of this redevelopment plan. The redevelopment entity or agency selects a redeveloper to undertake the redevelopment project, or projects that implement the plan. The governing body enters into a redevelopment agreement with the redeveloper, wearing details such as agreements regarding stormwater management, stormwatering management facility, roadway improvements, and other things are stipulated. The redeveloper makes an application to the Planning Board for a site plan review. Now, question, when are you folks going to speak to the Planning Board about this Route 35 Circus Liquors Development? You will more than likely speak to us at the site plan review, which may come in January, February, I do not know. That is, again, according to what the site developer, what the site developer presents. But that is what I'm trying to tell you, folks. The questions you have for this ordinance should be going to the council itself, the committee itself. Any other questions, I should, we're reiterating, so that...
The chair decides.
At this time, then, I would like to present our study. And, Mayor Comer, your presentation, sir, and your chairman matters?
We're not, you're not feeling, you have to honor these 20 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much, my name is Francis Reiner, landscape architect and professional planner, in the state of New Jersey, I've been working with DMR Architecture, and have been a partner there for about 10 years now. Appreciate the opportunity this evening to present to you the redevelopment plan for what we're calling the Circus Liquors properties. You can see the block and lots that are identified on this slide, what I'm going to do is, we shall have a report here, this report is the full detail of information, I'm going to give you a presentation that outlines what I believe are the most critical and important pieces. Occasionally, I will, I will state a page number just as a reference for you, but I'm not going to go through every single line, I'm really going to do is try to hit the highlights of what this redevelopment plan is about, and all of the work that we put together to ensure that a high-quality project is, is developed ultimately. Originally, as you mentioned, the, the Township had done an investigation study, and I just wanted to kind of outline in terms of the properties that were reviewed, in terms of meeting the statutory criteria as an area in need of redevelopment, the red represents those properties that were presented to the board, ultimately were recommended to the Mayor Council, as, as areas that met the criteria for an area in need of redevelopment, the yellow properties, in our opinion, did not, and so, just, just in terms of where the redevelopment plan is, and what it constitutes, it's the red identified on this matter. I'm going to perhaps make a couple statements that you've already made, but I think it's important, because, because the redevelopment plan process is not always one that, that is easy to understand, so, essentially, a redevelopment plan represents a zone, in this particular case, the vast majority of the zone would be an overlay to the underlying PD zone, meaning that the PD zone, which is the current zone, is still applicable, even if this plan were to be adopted. So, some of the reasons why you use a, you do a redevelopment plan is that it gives you greater control in terms of the types of design, design standards, that are required of the development than just typical zoning. A PD zone would give you the bulk standards, but it might not provide you with as much landscape design standards, stormwater drainage standards. A redevelopment plan allows you to go much greater in depth in terms of the requirements which are placed upon the developer, ultimately, and so, a redevelopment plan ensures and secures that you're going to get a higher quality development than what you would typically get under just zoning.
Excuse me, so, are you saying typically with redevelopment plan, it gives the capability for the township officials or the Township Committee to specify a level of zoning requirements that typically go beyond what you would see in zoning requirements?
I would agree with that, yes.
Including landscaping and other elements that typically developers have more freedom to execute.
Yes, that, that zoning typically does not require, and so, I'm going to walk through many of those in my presentation, and then I'm going to refer to some of them in the document, but you will see as we go through this, that we have placed upon the property far greater standards than you would typically get under normal zoning, typical zoning, and I'll kind of highlight those as we go through.
And doesn't that in a sense restrict which developers may be interested in the property?
The, the goal, the objective of redevelopment plan should be to promote what is in the best interest of the municipality, and not in the best interest of the developer, and so, there are...
I realize that, but it still restricts, it restricts which developers may be willing to pursue the project.
Mr. Davis, I think what you're alluding to...
Well, I'm not asking your...
If, if, Mr. Davis, that, as a governing body official, planning board, okay, that, that, you know, will ultimately know, goes on zoning, I would tell you that what you're saying is, and what Mr. Reiner said now twice, which unfortunately, maybe, it may or may not be comprehending, is that...
(audience cheering)
Is that the zoning requirements of our redevelopment zone gives the municipalities...
I'm not asking you a question.
Well, Mr. Davis, he's answered your question twice, and sure, I guess...
He hasn't, he hasn't responded to the specific, just to be final, yes.
Tell me the point.
I apologize if I haven't answered your question, I'm, I'm trying to, if you could maybe, bring word of the previous.
Look, the point I'm trying to get to is, doesn't this limit, by specifying detailed zoning requirements, doesn't it limit the flexibility of developers, and the type of developers that may want to come into development property?
It, it limits, it doesn't limit the type of development, the PD zone really, existing PD zone, which is the underlying zoning, has limited in terms of the bulk and use requirements for the property. What we're doing is, is to the redevelopment processes, we are adding multiple layers to ensure quality of the development on top of the zoning.
Yes.
If a redevelopment plan were to place new zoning, or, or zoning that was, was not in line with the underlying zoning, then I would answer the question that you asked as, yes, it does limit it. But given that the, the redevelopment plan, for, for most of the, of the requirements of the underlying zoning is very similar, what we're really doing here is, is ensuring higher quality design, as opposed to changing the uses, which would limit the developers that would be interested, that's how I would answer it.
Now, in this situation, does a developer have a choice, he either goes to the redevelopment process, or goes to the PD zone, general development process?
Yes. I'd like to break in here, what we usually do in our meetings, and I, I think most of the members know, that we, we can ask our engineer comments, once he, once he actually shows his whole, shows his whole plan. Let's write down the comments you wish to say, but let's, let, I would say, let him run through it first, because it's a lengthy, it's a lengthy procedure here, and I would like to be able to save the comments for the end of, end of his, his speech pertaining to the plan.
Okay. Proceed. So, in addition, what we've outlined here is, is that there are design standards with business document for, from a neighborhood standpoint, architectural, landscape, architectural, sustainability, use in bold. In addition, as you mentioned, part of this process would be then to ultimately designate a developer, and, and enter into a redevelopers agreement, which would set forth the performance As I mentioned, the properties are oriented and designated as an area in need of redevelopment without condemnation, in the report that you have in front of you on page 37, it, it outlines the consistency of this plan with, with the Township Master Plan 2004, the 2009 amended master plan, the 2014 renovation report, and the state development and redevelopment plan. So, from page 37 and beyond, it talks about consistency, it's important... It's important to note that these things are not done in vacuums, that they're intended to be done with a consistent pattern of what is being proposed within the municipality over time. And so, we've gone through that as part of the document. As I mentioned, the plan represents the zoning. It's really broken into two districts. And so, I know the lettering is small, so I'm going to kind of allude to it so the public can see it as well. The two districts are the commercial track, and that would be the track close to Route 35. So looking at this image, it would be where the little writing is, to the left of that image represents the commercial track, and the residential track represents to the right of the image. And so, there are two distinct districts, and the zoning that we've placed into this and the requirements we've placed in this are based on those two tracks. As the chairman mentioned, this is a multi-step process. The first step was the investigations, and we presented that to the board. It was recommended that the properties that we had identified be designated as an area of redevelopment. This, of course, is the second step in the process, and this would be the redevelopment plan. And then, the subsequent step, which is the step really where a lot of the questions come in, is the site plan application. So after a developer is designated, the developer then puts together a site plan application. That site plan application comes before the board. The public has an opportunity to comment on that site plan application, and the developer at that point has to provide a significant amount of information pertaining to things like stormwater management, traffic, all of those components that are really the basis of the plan. What we're doing here tonight is really just zoning in terms of what is permitted. There's a longstanding history in this property, Shannon, and I know that I have not been involved with all of this, but I think it's important to kind of walk through that for both the board's knowledge and also for the public. As nineteen ninety-four, let's start nineteen ninety-two, the New Jersey designated this site as a future regional center for dense mixed-use redevelopment. In nineteen ninety-four, the township implemented zoning that would allow for dense mixed-use development while aggressively preserving other portions of the township as open space. At nineteen ninety-four, which is identified as a town center plan above, permitted up to one point seven million square foot of commercial square footage, an additional to four hundred and twenty-five residential units, four hundred of the market rate, and twenty-five of affordable. In two thousand, the state renewed the state plan keeping the site designated for dense mixed-use redevelopment. In two thousand and one, the township attempted to downzone the property, which was thrown out by the courts. In two thousand and three and four, the township resold the property to try to promote more residential development. These efforts were again overturned by the courts. In two thousand and eight, the township lost the lawsuit allowing the developer to legally proceed with the town center, originally envisioned for nineteen, in nineteen ninety-four, again with one point seven million square feet and four hundred and twenty-five units. In two thousand and nine, the township agreed to settle, and the two thousand and nine settlement included six hundred and ten thousand square foot of retail and a total of four hundred and twenty, five hundred and four residential units, four hundred and twenty-four of the market rate and eighty of them affordable. The redevelopment plan that we're presenting to you this evening has a requirement of a maximum of four hundred thousand square foot of commercial space, a maximum of four hundred residential units, which would include a minimum of twenty percent of the units being affordable or eighty units. So three hundred and twenty market rate and eighty affordable. Again, I have not been involved with the whole history of this site, and I understand that there's a lot to that. I thought it was important to try to relay a little bit of the history and where we've come from, where you've come from, to where we are this evening. Again, there are a significant amount of gross tracks, so the gross track would be both of them. So you can see the commercial track on the left, the residential track on the right. There are permitted accessory uses that are a part of the gross track requirements. As I mentioned, the PD zone is the underlying zone, that's the existing zone right now. There are stormwater management facility requirements, there are roadway connectivity requirements, and there are open space regulations. We'll go through all of those individually by the district. As I mentioned, there are two districts, there's the commercial track and the residential track. But it's important to note that there are sub-districts. So the commercial track includes what is known as the north retail district, which is identified in the purple, the corner at Route thirty-five at King's Highway East. And the core district is the red, which is really the rest of the property down to King's Lane. The residential track is broken also into two sub-districts, one of them being the townhouse district, which is the purple. The public might not see that color, so everything outside is yellow. And then, the multifamily district, which would be the affordable housing component in the yellow corner. Some of the gross track requirements that we identified, that I'm calling out here as being maybe high-level reports, again, all of them are actually identified within the report that you have, but just to kind of go through some of the important ones we think talk to the quality of the development. In terms of the permitted accessory uses, fast food drive is prohibited as part of the redevelopment plan. Accessory drive-throughs for pharmacies, banks, and supermarkets would be permitted. I know that has been a point of contention by a number of different people. We wanted to make sure that we at least noted it for this evening's presentation. The stormwater management facilities are intended to serve the entire development and can be located within either the residential or the commercial track. In the roadway connectivity, there is an interconnect road that will be between the residential and the commercial track, and we have requirements for that particular road, which will ultimately be a public street. And then, in terms of the open space requirements, the gross track, meaning both the residential and the commercial combined, has a minimum requirement of thirty percent, and of that twenty-five percent has to be within the commercial track. So now, I'm going to walk through with you each one of the areas, and again, these are located within the document, starting on page twelve. I think it's important also, as I go through this, I will note of these requirements, which ones are actually already the PD zone, the underlying PD zone. So in terms of permitted uses, all the existing, now, we're talking about the north retail district, which is the purple, identified as purple. The existing uses are permitted, non-residential uses in the gross track are permitted, and stormwater management facilities are permitted. On the bottom, you'll see what is essentially conceptual site plan. I don't want to get caught up on the site plan because this is zoning, but what you want to do is you want to understand what the zoning would look like physically. So we have the concept plan on the bottom right, and you can see in that particular area, now it's oriented to the side, so just for board's education. The north retail district is located right here. So the only identifiable uses on that property at the moment are the existing Wells Harbor Bank and stormwater facility, sort of a stormwater detention base. There's no other uses that are permitted. So bulk standards, bulk standards are minimum lot size of an acre, the building setback for what would be a new road alignment. Currently, King's Highway East goes to the left of the area. It's pointed, it would actually cut through and connect in with the loop. So the setbacks along Twin Brooks would be fifty foot, the setback from the gross track boundary would be fifty foot, any building setback from an internal property line would be fifteen foot. The building height would be four stories and sixty feet, and I know that becomes a point of contention, so I just want to make sure everybody understands that the four-story sixty feet is currently permitted in the PD zone. So we're not allowing extra height or extra stories in this redevelopment plan. And since this is an overlay zone, the developer could always go back and use the zoning standards from the PD zone. So it means that what we're simply doing is we're taking the permitted height and stories, and we're simply transferring as a part of this redevelopment plan. The intention here is not to build, the concept plan is not to build four-story buildings. It's simply allowing the developer what is already permitted within the PD zone. Parking requirement standards in terms of setbacks are twenty-five foot along the gross track, internal property lines ten foot, and along buildings a six foot. For the core district, and that is page twelve, thirteen, again, the existing uses of the PD zone, again, stormwater management facilities are also permitted. The bulk standards in terms of setbacks are either meet the existing PD or in excess of the existing PD. So we're making a situation of existing PD zone, and we're providing greater setback requirements from the developer, meaning that the proximity to existing developments or existing buildings outside of this development, we are making a better situation than is currently permitted under the PD zone. And so, the building setbacks would be thirty-five foot along King's Highway East, it would be a minimum of seventy-five foot along, or adjacent to any single-family residential zone, it would be a hundred and fifty feet. The building height I've already kind of talked to you about in terms of what is permitted in the PD zone. The parking standards for out parcels would be five feet. There are a couple of out parcels which are adjacent to Route thirty-five. If you look at the red on the upper image, there are two kind of cutout areas along Route thirty-five. Those are what are designated as out parcel. The other requirements I have not covered in this report, in this presentation, or in the report, I just wanted to at least note a couple that I thought were important. Some of the landscape design standards, when you typically are looking at this type of development, you may just have a situation where a developer typically want to come in and just build a large asphalt parking lot. So the requirements that we have placed on this particular commercial track is that the parking lots have to be divided up into lots of approximately two hundred and seventy-five spaces that are separated by an elevated landscape or altitude, strip with a minimum of twelve foot. So what you're going to get is, you're going to get smaller areas of parking with landscape buffer in between those areas, which we believe obviously provides a much higher quality than simply an asphalt or sea of parking, as you may see in some types of developments of this character. In addition, we are requiring that at the terminus of every parking aisle, so if you have two-headed parking, at the end of that, we're requiring a landscape median with two landscape trees on both sides. So again, we're creating more of a pattern of streets with street trees within the development. So not a large sea of asphalt, we're really identifying the streets within the development. And so, those again are critical pieces that you may not, you would not get in terms of just an underlying zoning, zoning would not dictate if you have to do those things. In this redevelopment plan, we are dictating those. There are a series of others, but those are two that I wanted to point out to the board. In terms of the residential track, the permitted uses in residential track are both the townhouses and multifamily. The townhouse would be in the purple, top right, and then would be the area that is darker, and the multifamily would be the yellow in the corner. The number of units, as I indicated, would be a total of four hundred. Townhouses would be a maximum of three hundred and twenty. Multifamily would be a maximum of eighty, and that represents twenty percent, or a minimum of eighty, I apologize, a minimum of eighty, which represents twenty percent set aside for affordable. The minimum lot size, which is predicated on the multifamily, would be three acres, and then the lot coverage would be seventy-five percent for the multifamily, sixty-five percent for the townhouses. Again, in terms of the building setbacks, there's a minimum of thirty-five foot setback along the gross track area, a minimum of fifty foot along King's Highway East, a minimum of twelve foot setback within the internal roads, a minimum of twelve foot along the interconnect road. Bottom right image, that represents the residential track, so the interconnect road would run along the bottom. So I know this is not oriented exactly the same way, but this would be the interconnect road through here, and in this map, it would be through here. So the interconnect road would dissect the commercial track from the townhouse track, and that would be, that would be the final piece. We have placed requirements on the interconnect road in terms of sidewalks, in terms of landscape, trees, lighting, so that it functions as a public street, not just a country. And the building separation from the single-family zone, setback apart, would be seventy-five foot, and the building separation would be twenty-five foot. In addition, the residential track, just some additional standards, and this really starts on page fifteen of your document. The townhouses are permitted at four-story, forty-five foot, multifamily four-story, thirty-five foot. The clubhouse would be two stories, and any accessory building would be one story. And you can see the parking circulation and setback requirements, the long track would be fifty foot, the interconnect road would be fifteen foot, residential buildings would be six foot, and non-residential buildings like clubhouse would be ten. As I mentioned, we walked through and starting on page nineteen of the document, we put in place, and these are, and this from nineteen, page thirty-seven, really represents a design standard that you would not typically find in a zone or zoning district. And so, I'm going to go through some of them, but I'm not going to go through all of them. So you can see the list of all of the identifiable components of the design standards in terms of architectural character, beam, pedestrian circulation, all the way to form and scale, elevations, all of those things, materials are all components of the, of the design standards. What I thought I would do is show you some of the imagery of what is, what would be proposed in terms of the graphic, and I'm not sure if everyone can see this, but I'll kind of walk through this. So this is a photo taken from, or image taken from Route thirty-five, going to the main entrance. And you can see that there are large landscape areas, these would be stormwater detention bases. You can see the landscape, so you have identifiable streets within the development as opposed to just asphalt on the commercial. So these are requirements that are part of the redevelopment. Simply isn't, you know, this is what we're hoping for, this is a requirement, so when the site plan application comes before the board, it has to meet the requirements that are identified in this report in terms of the landscape and setbacks, all those types. There's an image that is an area located at the back, there's a large public plaza, so then you have retail that steps out front, so you have a street here, this represents the outdoor pedestrian plaza. You can see that the idea here is that the plaza actually becomes more important, the pedestrian piece becomes more important. You can start to see here that this is that landscape delineation between the different areas of parking, so that requirement to a seventy-five spaces, this represents one of those landscapes. So this is actually a pedestrian walkway that connects within the town to Route thirty-five. And then, an image taken across, so you can see some of the landscape that's required as a part of the development. See that when you come in there, there are areas where there's, shown on this is the green, that represents those twelve-foot areas. So again, everything we're trying to do really represents a higher quality type of development. In terms of the architecture and the character as proposed in what the redevelopment plan here is, some images of some of the types of buildings, it's purple zone, we have a material palette within the redevelopment plan, so that when the application comes before the board and they are proposing certain types of materials, you can look in the redevelopment plan and determine whether or not they are subsequently meeting those requirements. But these are some of the images that are being proposed for development. You can see it's a variety of different materials, not permitted to have just flat facades, so there's undulation, which creates interest from an architectural standpoint, there are deviations in height, so the buildings aren't just one level. So there's a much higher quality of design that has been written into the requirements in redevelopment plan from an architectural standpoint. Just some more images of different proposed areas. This is going to be the public plaza that is proposed. We showed the image of that previously, and another shot of the public plaza, just to show you kind of where that is. The last two images that would have been taken looking into this area, you can start to see how you have delineation between this parking area, this parking area, and this parking area. So you can see how the plan really looks to create much smaller areas of parking with a lot more landscape, a lot more buffer. a lot more landscape, a lot more buffers, to again, you know, ensure a higher quality of design. In terms of residential concept, again, there are requirements, design standard requirements for the, for the residential zone. I thought, you know, probably easiest thing is to show you one of the proposed elevations. We have in the document identified how we have, you can't have repeating building facades with the same materials within the development, so you're trying to really make sure that you have a different character, different architecture in terms of facade materials, that you're not taking a single, this would be a, you know, five, a five-unit building and repeating that five-unit building, in times that it's going to appear as a different architectural talent. As I mentioned, there's a lot of information in this report, but I'm going to, I did highlight a few things here that I thought were also important from a sustainable standpoint. The list on the top, which is required, because these would be absolutely required as a part of the site plan application, if and when it comes in, to provide grass species, to drought-tolerant plants, to manage rainwater by implementing detention in rain gardens, minimize the surface erosion, maximize excessive improvements, low flood toilets, provide trees, build landscape requirements, full cutoff lighting in primary parking areas, again, to limit the, to limit any lighting, noise, pollution to adjacent properties, that's a requirement, efficient HVAC units, LED lighting for all site signage, park lot lighting, to provide a charging station for every hundred vehicles, one for every 300 vehicles. And then the components that would be encouraged, but not necessarily required, would be the list, the list below, in terms of where the materials came from, coolers and whatnot. So not only do you have zoning, but what you have in here is required, that go way beyond what zoning would typically require developer to do in order, in order to design and develop that is much more sustainable from an environmental standpoint. Like I said, there's a lot in here, I'm not going to read all this, but I just want to, I highlighted a few of the things that I thought were important. There's a, you know, for the residential tract, 50-foot line buffer shall be provided along the perimeter road. In terms of landscape requirements, the growth tract, trees shall be planted on both sides, the interconnect road, and intervals of not more than 30-foot on center. There should be the interconnect road, or the landscape area, or the sidewalk, minimum. Shade trees should be planted along all private internal roads, one tree every 120-foot, that's for the growth tract. And then the trees are to be three to three-and-a-half inch caliper, which are a good size in comparison to what some developers typically want to put in, which is a two-and-a-half to three inches, three to five inches. So it's again, a higher standard. And then along King's Highway East, because I know that that is a, that's an important corridor for existing residential, existing neighborhoods, there's a 75-foot, a minimum setback of 75-foot, and parking shall be at least 50-foot off of King's Highway East. And along the interconnect road, it says the number of trees that it, it should consist of a minimum of, no free standing side shall be located along 50-foot of, within 50-foot of King's Highway East. And then the commercial tract, that there's additional landscaping along the north side of King's Highway East, in the closest proximity to the residential, with a minimum of the 20 shade trees. That's in addition to the existing buffer that's going to be kept in that area, so it's not just 20 shade trees, it's, they're going to be keeping the existing, the proposal and a requirement is to keep the existing trees in that area and then add to it to create a better buffer. And again, in terms of lighting, just to hit some of the highlights, the LED fixtures are to be dark sky compliant, meaning that they really shield the light from going off-site, that pedestrian lights should not be great at the empty foot, so you're not going to get these large overhead, you know, lighting up. The idea here is just to limit the light. And so, as I, as I indicated, I knocked out all of the requirements, but I tried to listen to you or tell you what I thought were the most important ones, and then try to show you how this redevelopment plan goes far beyond what the underlying PD zone permits by requiring a higher quality development, both from an architectural standpoint, from a sustainable standpoint, from a landscape, architectural standpoint. And so, you know, with that, I have to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner, for reading the report. Any comments in the board?
Yes, I have a number of questions. You've gone through a number of new zoning requirements, those, those, more regular building height, whatever, and also architectural as well as sustainability elements. How did you come about with these new recommendations?
So it's, it's an iterative process, you know, you have your underlying PD zone as a basis that you can use. There is a developer that has been involved, everybody knows that. Part of the process was look at the underlying PD zone, look at what the developer was proposing, and then look at what is the best township to require, things that a developer might not necessarily be willing to do unless required to do. And so what we did is, is we looked at those components and then put together a plan based on those requirements.
So were you to meet with the developer that had been working on the plan and come up with some suggestions from that developer, did you meet with township officials to come up with proposed zoning requirements?
We met with, we did meet with the, with developers, then we did meet with the township, and we did meet with some members of the public, all in the network, to try and understand the various issues that everybody, and concerns that everybody correctly had about property. So we, we took information from, as I mentioned, we did have a meeting with the public, with members of the public, we had a meeting with municipality, and we had a meeting with the developer.
And what was it? When you said you had a meeting with the public, was that, how did you select which members of the public to meet with?
I did not, I was asked to, to attend a meeting, and I didn't, members of the public were at...
Who sent the meeting out?
The, I believe it was the township attorney.
Township attorney?
On some of the architecturals, 24-story building, you're, I say that they call it flat roof, and you're introducing a, like a living roof, like someone, I can see that in North Jersey, near the, you know, North Jersey City, but we're, architecturally, we might still not care for that, being a more traditional area. It's a great idea, I don't know if it would work in middle towns, one question I have architecturally.
In terms of whether or not you do a take roof versus a flat roof?
Yeah, but to have a flat roof and then having a, having a recreational area, it's interesting, and I know it's been done, I don't know if it would fit into our plans. But that's, again, that's conjecture, once we, once we see a complete site plan.
Yes.
That's different. The other question I have, and I'm on the environmental commission, is that detention base, responsibilities of taking care of it by either a commercial district or the home area, well, that would be, that has to be probably shared, if you say so.
So I think that the final decision on that would be, would be identified within the redevelopment agreement with the redevelopment. I will say that there are requirements that, that even if certain portions of the open space are teed over to the municipality, a minimum of at least 25% has to stay within the developer. And so, having said that, it seems to me that it's more likely that developers are going to be required to maintain it than the municipality will. But the redevelopment agreement would certainly take the who's responsible, what happens if one party that is responsible does not do it to a certain level, then the other party would, there would be methods to come in and rectify it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, for my indication, you had a slide up there showing the, the evolution of this from 1994 to 2009 until now, and you noticed pretty quickly that the percentage of units that were COA seemed to go up. And I don't know if, maybe everybody knows this and I just knew, but is that something that changed on a statutory level, or is it part of the settlement in 2009?
So in terms of the original settlement, and we have a few municipalities, actually all of the 55 municipalities, 46 municipalities have a certified COA plan, we were one of those. In Espa, we had a 220 market grade unit, and 82, okay, the housing unit, which was a part of even the, I believe it was a nice settlement. However, what the circus maker planning proposals is, that have lowered the number of units to 320, and 70, I think it's 70 or 80, or 80 or 40. So that's as per our 2000 housing plan and 2000 pressure plan, which was a fact that go up.
I have another question. Under your background information section of the document, I indicated, he said that nothing shall preclude the property owner within the redevelopment plan area from submitting an application in accordance with the underlying zone. So is it the case where someone, developer could come in and choose whether they want to go through the redevelopment process, or they will go with the current PD zone process?
Yes, that would be the case.
So why, why would a developer want to go through the redevelopment process when there's much more regulation?
You know, I think these questions are fair questions from the board and inquisitive in trying to figure out the problem. But the determination by statute is whether or not this is a substantial conformance of the master plan. Trying to understand the motivations for, or the results of, based on provision within this plan, that's what's in the prerogative of the township committee. How does it work, how many units, why are the signs this big versus that big, why are the buffers this much versus that much? All those things, that's in the prerogative of the committee. And the only thing to be for this board, whether or not it's a changeably consistent in the master plan. So I'll leave this at the point of that. How far do I go with Mr. Reiner asking, responding to questions that really go to the workings of this particular redevelopment, how it might play out, what board they did, how they get here. I understand that all those things are maybe of interest, and board members, what I'm saying is statutorily, this is not relevant.
Well, actually, I'm not asking that, I'm asking, what is the advantage as a developer doing through redevelopment plan?
That's not up to Mr. Reiner to answer.
Yeah, well, it would be conjecture for me to answer that. I mean, I can answer that question in terms of opinion, but I don't know that that would be the developer's perspective.
I don't want your personal opinion on this.
I mean, there's advantages and disadvantages going both ways, that's up to the developer to decide which one he wants to see.
As all you folks know, this is the fourth time, the fourth round on this project. I've been, I myself have been to three rounds, and believe me, the planning board is going to be very, very, will use a jaundice eye, looking at this project. There were a lot of good things and a lot of bad things, but we really will look at it very closely. You can, I can guarantee you that.
I'll be able to note that also in the back of Mr. Reiner's report, which has been distributed to the public as well, beginning on page 37 through the next five or six pages, Mr. Reiner lists the different master plan land use issues, talks about the different policies, talks about the 2009 amendment to the master plan, the 2014 master plan examination report, lists things in there that he found while reviewing, while preparing the redevelopment plan, things that he referenced in our existing master plan documents. Mr. Reiner is not making a conclusion as to whether or not it's substantially insistent, he's leaning at it to you, those things are in his report, and then it's true down in front of the board from the overall plan consent, with her recommendations as well. The report by Mr. Reiner has been released to the public, obviously it could introduce the township committee law, it is a public document. If you then, long after this meeting, record from your planner, accept it by board, then it can be released as a public document. Within that document, and you can see it in short, there's basically conclusionary statements based on your planner, reviewing all of this, that's where there's substantial consistency. Mr. Reiner carefully does enjoy that conclusion, he just lists data and references within your documents to draw your attention to them, so you can date that as soon. Again, you're not bound by the opinion or the report of your planner, but it's fair forgotten.
Mr. Norman?
Mr. Chairman, I actually have a question at the bottom of page 37, which is, what's the specifics of consistency review, and so it may be prudent to ask Mr. Reiner questions on page 37.
Let me, let me go back, I found the reference to our study as our, thank you for bringing the rules and regulations of the, of the board adopted every year, and let me read, where's it about chair, here obviously, Mr. Rajan acting as the chair tonight. The chair is section one, called two-dish, the chair shall preside all meetings and hearings of the board, decide all points of order and matters of procedure governing said meetings or hearings, and shall perform all the duties normally occurring, perking to his or her office as required by law for this, these rules prevailing in parliamentary practice. So when I said before, it's a prerogative of the chair, with the advice and consent basically of the board, that's not correct, it's at the prerogative of the chair.
I understood the chair's statement, you cannot comment on the ordinance, it doesn't matter to present to the township committee. These comments, and specifically comments regarding questions, these presented on page 37, have nothing to do with the board, they have everything to do with the matter, the sole matter at hand and consistency review. The planning board attorney, you know, sort of asked the board to focus their questions on consistency rather than design, and representative members of the public, I have a question regarding, but he, what the presenter said was his consistency review, which is really a mistake, because all it is is a list of certain objectives that are quote, relevant.
And there are probably many others that you could point through that go the other way.
I think...
And that may be ours, but it's not a whole of hearing, it's not a whole of hearing, it's up to the...
Including the ones that were permitted from the list.
I will not have it at this time. If you wish to come to the meeting on August, on August 20th, so be it.
Will the planning board be accepting comments on the consistency review with the master plan at that time?
Planning board's action is to...
That's right, so we should be able to comment, and we're here. We have a plan.
That's your view, and I appreciate it. Could you tell me whether or not it's a priority?
As you said, discretion, and you're not prohibited by the...
Are you required, is it more required?
Sometimes we have to do more than...
I'm going by the law, I will not.
You're not me, so, Mr. Chairman, when you admonished this audience...
I'm not admonishing the audience, sir.
When you said...
I am not admonishing the audience, sir.
With careful eyes.
Excuse me.
Then you're not going to hear from the public like...
But we will definitely hear from the public, we will definitely hear from the public on a second time, on a second review.
Will we hear from the public tonight?
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 We'll hear you right now. Got a little heated, the full reporter only has two hands, two ears, it's really hard, and I understand sometimes things get decided, but please, we all try to talk on it.
Mr. Chairman, I think one of the reasons there's so many folks here today is that at the township committee on July 16th... there was a statement made that the public would be heard at the planning board meeting.
Yes, that's what they said.
But that's not what's required.
These presentations of the township committee were made as a, as a, there were opportunities to, 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 to. There's a lot of questions that were asked, Mr. Reiner, and yet we're so. For a data to take that particular comment is not something that the township committee had or anyone on the committee has expectation of outside the site of the master plan approval. Whatever client that would occur.
The statement was made at the township committee.
Were you at the committee?
No, but I saw a tape of it. I saw a tape of it.
That's what we can hear.
With all due respect, this board doesn't tell the township committee what to do, and the township committee, with all due respect, can't guide what happened. So, I mean, that's, so if that statement was made, it was made. But the township committee doesn't control the process here, nor does this board here control anything that happens, they're independent bodies. And so this body is acting on the law with what it thinks is appropriate. It's that discretion of the chair. My recommendation is to not open.
Pound salt.
And I'm not trying to make this grievance. I'm just saying that sometimes everybody's entitled to their opinion and majority rules in both cases, and if someone said something that maybe in the end of the moment, catching one word here and there and phrase, that's not binding on this board, on this board.
This board said they would hear, hear people when we ran out of time last time. This board said we could share from you when we ran out of time. There was five of us waiting. And he said, next time we meet, we'll hear your questions.
I would, you have to read that out. First of all, number one, from that distance and unidentified, again, trying to make the record, that's not easy, sir. What's your name, William Chaplin?
I'm not.
I'm not, I just gave your name.
I'm David Hock. B T U S S, Eric Raj. And when I came here last time in January, I was told that I could ask my questions at the next meeting. Here I am.
What was that for?
The site plan.
It was, it was, I was on the site plan.
Two minutes.
I believe that the site, I don't know if it was in general, yeah, it was at the last meeting. It was, I believe, the site plan.
But this matter that you have here tonight has never busy for the planning board for this particular issue. It was here for the designation, back when, Mr. Reiner, we got the dates, but you cited before. That issue was here before the board, clearly before all that. There were site plan hearings, started, ended, back and forth. Things may have happened then, but this here has one particular purpose, is the only time it's been listed on the agenda. Sorry, August one is listed, but it was postponed. And tonight is a special meeting for that purpose. So there was never any prior discussion or public comment or public participation on this issue before the board.
I think motion to Mr. Reiner's presentation and refer this back to the committee.
But the motion should be that you, that you recommend to find it substantially consistent with the master plan and refer it back to the committee. I may make that, you know, suggestion.
I think motion to, to we find it substantially, excuse me, substantially consistent with the master plan and refer it to the township committee.
May I have a second?
Second. Oh, wait, 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 now we have an opportunity to ask questions.
And that is with, just as a clarification, again, I'm sorry to interrupt, but with that, we have the August thirteenth, today's date, the memorandum from Bishopon's plan. You're relying upon that as well, right? I don't want to change the motion.
That's correct, yeah.
You have that and you're relying upon that, and you're making that motion. There's a motion, a second. And I can look at the board rule, but I know what it says. There could be discussion on the motion, if that's, if there's discussion.
Yes, I have some questions.
Yes, sir.
One of the, within the master plan, it talks, it, it begins with sections on objectives and principles, assumptions, and policies. And one of the objectives of the master plan is to encourage streamlining development review procedures and to a simple simplification of the development standards and regulations to create a more efficient process which will help in reducing development costs. I think this goes totally against that, this redevelopment plan. I don't think, I don't think redevelopment plan is consistent with this part of the master plan. Why? Because it's adding complexity, it's not simplifying. But that's okay, I'm just saying, from my point of view, I don't think this is.
Master plan here, one of the other. See if we can get some.
We got one, two, a vote count, a vote.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Silicky?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Uh, no with comments. I think this process that we're going through is totally unfair to the public. This is being railroaded through in a vacation month of August with very little public view. I think it's totally inappropriate.
My report is, everyone here has the opportunity of going to the twentieth meeting at eight P M. and speaking to the town council and the committee who act, who rent our government. Now, also, the site plan, which we will spend hours and hours and hours questioning the developer environmentally, architecturally, COA. Is there trouble, we cannot solve that right now in this particular meeting with, with the folks we have out here. You do have the opportunity to speak to the government officials, your elected officials on the twentieth. And then, of course, you can come to all our meetings when we do review site plans, when we do have public comment available to you. Thank you.
So at this point, then, your report that it referred to the board has it, that can be a public document. It was a public cert.